All right.
That's right.
I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, January 17th, 2017. Is there anybody here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, I will make a quick public welcome to Chris Cockshar, new member of the Planning Board. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. All right, we do not have Planning Board minutes for our last meeting, I think, so we'll put that off till the next meeting.
Yep.
So moving on to the A and R for 95 Park Hill Road.
Nobody here to speak to it, but I can explain the map.
Okay.
It's a large parcel, it's the Molotaurus Orchard up on Park Hill. There is frontage that already exists on the North Hampton side. The, what is being cut out is Parcel A, which includes the house lot. And there's, that frontage will be on the East Hampton side and it's zoned R-35 and it meets the, it meets the frontage requirements for the R-35 zone, so.
So the new lot is this Parcel A?
Parcel A is the new one.
And it's got that 245 of frontage?
Correct.
Does it need 120?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Chat, welcome.
All right. See nothing untoward here.
Any issues in planning perspective?
No, it meets all the endorsement requirements for an A and R, so.
Okay.
I motion to endorse the A and R for 95 Park Hill Road.
I'll second them, seeing who just came in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right. All right, Jessica, remind me again.
Mylar and copy for the applicant, and then a signed copy for planning, city clerk, and that's it for sign, the rest I can, I can give unsigned.
So was that three?
Yeah, make it four, just for fun.
Sounds good.
Make it two.
Thank you, under our band.
No less to buy.
All right, no old business, we're moving along to Nicole McCorkendale and Justin Berger on 49 Union Street. So you want to come up to the grand podium and tell us what's going on?
Yes.
So we want to put in a smoke shop in that location. We've been in business for four years up in North Adams. Excuse me, but we live more locally, so we're trying to move closer. We already have the location procured from the business owner, he knows what we want to do, he has no problems with it.
You've been doing this in North Adams, you said, is that right?
Yep, four years.
Are you shutting down that store, you're gonna?
We are.
Yeah. And so what kind of stuff specifically, I was looking at this, are you planning on selling?
Yep, we'll have glass pipes, your regular tobacco accessories, things like that, clothing, tapestries, incense, jewelry, art, things like that, a lot of things you can find at music festivals. We also have a festival vending business, and it's kind of like a brick and mortar where you can get those types of things.
Okay.
You call it a smoke shop, but you don't have tobacco as like...
We're thinking about possibly carrying tobacco, we've had, we have a tobacco license, we've always had a tobacco license. We've never carried loose leaf tobacco, we focus more on the accessories side of it than the actual tobacco. If the area required, needed that, or wanted us to carry that, we would, yeah.
Yeah, I took the impression that you also do a lot of arts and crafts there too, jewelry and...
Yeah, jewelry and other things, yeah.
And I don't know if that's more prominent than having the e-cigarette or smoke shop part of it.
No, we have, our, the majority of our inventory is glass pipes and other smoking accessories.
Chat mentioned the e-cigarettes, do you carry the vaporizer stuff too?
Yep, we do carry, yep, we do carry some of that. It's not our main focus, but it is definitely a portion, yeah.
There were a couple of comments from some of the other departments that just put in the record here, so the Conservation Commission just noted that there was no wetlands issues. Then the building inspector noted that onsite use of tobacco is strictly prohibited, and that, just to make that clear.
Yep, yep, we have signs, we're well aware of those regulations.
Yep, and then the health department noted, have you seen these comments from the departments?
No.
Okay, okay. So the health department said, "Health department will require a license to sell tobacco products in place prior to any tobacco being sold on premises. They should apply to health department for this ASAP, otherwise the health department has no issues, concerns with the application as written." So, sounds like there's...
Yeah, I have one more that came in at five o'clock today from Nancy Follinsby, the superintendent of the public schools, and I'm just gonna read it. "Hi Jessica, I just learned that a retail smoke shop, Head East Smoke Shop, is coming before the Planning Board tonight with a proposal to put a smoke shop in a building located close to Center School. I know if school personnel had known about this earlier, there would have been people there tonight to express concern that this type of shop would be located near one of our elementary schools."
And it's close.
We took note of that. The other elementary school that's located by Cottage and Holyoke, here's a convenience store almost on that property that sells a lot of stuff that we would be selling, and they allow children in the store, nobody under 18 gets past our front door.
It's allowed in our store, and we ID when they come in.
I mean, the gas station, the Pride gas station right across the street from Center School sells tobacco products, I mean.
What is your intention for signage?
Mostly window signage, like some window lettering, things like that. We've talked to the landlord, he plans on replacing the awning that's over the building, which is in bad repair right now, and if we are in town on it and things are looking good, we're possibly gonna do a custom awning, so that we wouldn't actually have any hard signage or anything like that up on the building.
Are you looking for product displays from the storefront window?
Like a mannequin or so, not a ton of display from the window, but a mannequin with a little bit of clothing, things like that. No, we wouldn't display the pipes in the window, things like that, it just smash and grab, not, we wouldn't want anything that would entice that type of behavior.
How about deliveries, you guys get regularly deliveries or anything like that?
We actually have our inventory delivered to our house, just to make sure that we're there to pick it up.
Okay.
So that, we just take everything at home, unwrap it, and transport it to our location.
Anything that's delivered, that would be delivered to the shop, or no?
Nothing but mail.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, nothing but mail.
And how about the other side of things, waste removal, disposal, that kind of stuff?
There's a dumpster behind the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're allowed to use, we don't, our pack, we don't have packaging that's like descriptive or anything like that for our products, if we did, it would be sold with the packet, with the product, and anything else would just be standard paper and office type of trash.
Any of this stuff that you guys would be selling have any sort of unique disposal requirements with, thinking of like e-cigarettes or anything like that, is that all stuff that can just go in the garbage?
It would be your typical battery disposals.
Okay.
So you would want to dispose of it like any other household battery, so.
But presumably you're not actually disposing of those things after you're selling for someone else.
Yeah, that would be the consumer's requirement.
Okay.
About hours of operation?
We're still up in the air, we were contemplating, or we were tossing around Monday through Wednesday would be 10 to 6, Thursday through Saturday would be 10 to 8, and Sundays would most likely be closed.
Sandwich board sign, is that something that we, as a town, do we do that? I've never really seen...
We don't...
No, the, all the signs under the building department, and so they would need to go to the building department specifically for the sign permits.
Okay.
Yeah, and then if they wanted some sort of exception, they'd have to go to the ZBA.
Can I check in on that event stuff, you talked about having accessories for events, music concerts?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, not accessories for music events, just that, we've been at music festivals, and I'm not sure if you've ever been, but there's just a whole array of things that are kind of unique to finding there that you don't find in other places, like cap tins, certain types of designer hats, hula hoops, the jewelry, the specific types of jewelry, and then the smoking accessories, like the glass pipe art and things like that.
I think it's pretty clear, but just to be thorough, there are no events that you plan on holding in the building?
We were hoping to, if it was allowed, have like a grand opening party with a friend's band just doing an acoustic set, but I mean, we're, we're just hoping to, but it's not necessarily a plan. And then the space lends itself to be used as an art gallery in the future, we were, we had thoughts of seeing if there were permits or anything to, after regular store hours, like put the inventory in the back and set it up as like a gallery for a gallery showing, but these are all just, you know, hopes and dreams, just ideas, so. Our main function is, we want to be in business, so, and we're, we're definitely willing to work with the town on whatever requirements you guys have.
So I, my only note to that is, is there residences upstairs from the shop? Is there apartments that are upstairs?
There are. We know the kid that lives directly above us.
Okay, so that, just for the record, there has been some conflict in downtown when you've got a retail store downstairs and residences upstairs with music, and the board has addressed that in the past, so I just want to make you aware of that again, that it is a mixed-use building, and so to, to be cognizant of that and how, whatever use this may be impacted, if it's music specifically, there has been a history of that in the past in complaints with residences because of music in downtown. I mean, it's part of why you live in downtown to some people, but to others it isn't, so just to make a note of that, that's all.
Well, it doesn't sound like this is part of your general business.
No, it would, like I said, it would be for like the grand opening party, and I mean, it's for one specific resident directly above us, we know he'd have no problem, yeah, he's a friend of ours, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Anybody here have any comments or questions about the proposal?
It's crowded.
I think that Nancy's comment is a good one, to mention there are going to be kids nearby, and I hope that you'll be cognizant of that, but I think that you have the use, and that's, you know, that's our jurisdiction, so I would motion to approve the site plan approval, or go over to the site plan approval for 49 Union Street. You want to go through some stuff first?
Well, I think we, most of this doesn't necessarily apply, but might as well just walk through them here, so. "Conformance of provisions of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies, we've touched that to the extent it applies, protection of city amenities and abutting properties through minimizing of any detrimental or offensive use or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site. It's all sort of an existing building, which means of safety, of convenience on safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in a relationship to adjoining ways and properties. There's no on-street parking requirement, it's a downtown business, there's no real vehicular or pedestrian movement other than the sidewalks. Adequacy of the methods of disposal in sewage and refuse, and the drainage of service and subservice waters." Doesn't sound like they have anything unique with relation to waste, there's no service water issues, no issue with the protecting of wetlands or water sheds, adverse impacts on the city's resources, including water supply and distribution, sewage treatment, fire protection, sounds like it's typical use. Provision for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment. Doesn't sound like there's any real deliveries at all other than regular mail. Efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape doesn't really apply, it's a pre-existing building. Minimization of removal of vegetation doesn't apply, and consistency of development with respect to setback area placement and landscaping, that doesn't seem to apply.
Motion stands.
Any conditions you would like to set, or no?
So, in our draft decision, we talked about putting the language in the application about the onsite consumption of tobacco products, do you think we need to make that as a condition, or do you think it's clear enough as fits in the application?
It's the board's discretion, but I would, I would note that recreational marijuana is coming down the pike here, and onsite consumption unless a community...
I actually...
...vows to, votes to completely ban it within the community, it would be allowed, so it's just, I'm not saying one way or the other, but it's just something for you to be aware of in terms of this decision, and they may not allow it now, it may be something that could be permitted in the future, given the state laws, so you'll have to grapple with how you want to handle that.
Actually, Matt Wood's at Color, the part of the law firm that put forth the marijuana legislature to try and understand more what his intentions were, knowing this stuff would come before us, and he mentioned to me something that's fairly obvious about this tobacco stuff, is that the real issue, which is very difficult to get around, is the simple fact that secondhand smoke can be exposed to employees, and it's next to impossible to legislate around that, and it's therefore so incredibly hard to have an onsite smoke situation that has almost nothing to do with, with our capabilities and jurisdiction here. So I think it's highly unlikely that we'd see anything like that. My take is it's unnecessary.
I don't see anything.
Just put the language, I mean, it's, it ends up being basically the same thing, it's, the approval is based on the...
I could put it in the findings that the applicant stated that they will not permit onsite consumption, and then it's in the findings of the decision rather than being a condition, and that's, that's the basis of what you've presented, and so if those change and you want to come back and amend it, you can certainly do that, but it would be part of the findings that, that you've stated, that that's the case in terms of this business.
Yep.
And I think also to address Nancy's concern, I'd like to probably put in the decision regarding the, nobody over the age of 18 being allowed, and having that in, in the findings, that that, that the board has asked that question, and this is the applicant's response, and that you will be carding people in the business, and I think that's important to add as well, to address her concerns.
You generally have signage or something that mark?
We have, yeah, for a tobacco license, we're required by the state to have all kinds of signage about legal age of smoking, can't smoke on the premises, all those things.
But a 16-year-old can't come in and buy a hat, right? They're not allowed in the building?
Nope, we'll have a 18 over, you know, they'll be allowed in with their parents, because we've also been told in towns that you can't deny a parent bringing their child with the business, but it's discouraged, you know, and yeah, nobody without a parent that's under 18 will be allowed.
Okay.
Without a parent, we need that, I mean.
Sure.
JP Posensky, City Councilor. Gives me a little pause when I heard about this, just to, as much as I love business in town, concern about proximity to the school, and the number of young schoolchildren who will be exposed to the advertising, whether it be through the windows, and I don't know if you've had any arrangements that you have for just how carefully you would maybe condition or put in your approval, should you approve, about the types of products that are advertised. I know here it was stated that you wouldn't advertise certain products in your windows or have visibility, but that's, I think, something to, to give some thought to, as we start to go through the waters of moving toward other smoke products and other edible products that I think might be advertised in very close proximity to the school. I know before the city council, we have measures to look at marijuana and the number of feet from schools, the number of feet from other building, other, other users, all of that is on the table right now, and whether or not we reduce the number of licenses available. I would ask, as you move forward with this, that you consider advertising and, and what's placed in the windows, at le, at the very least, because there are certain products, I don't think you would want children of 12, 13, 14, 15 years old to be passing by every day on their way to school. There are other locations, I think, that make a lot of sense for this type of business, and the only concern is that in proximity to schoolchildren.
It is a little ironic, there are two other locations, I mean, there's the Union Mart right across the street from Maple Street School that sells essentially the same products, and then there's also the Pride Mart, which is, you know, half the distance from this school to center that sell tobacco products, I think they sell the flavored cigarettes and the chewed tobacco and all that, it's...
Those aren't the ones I'm necessarily thinking about, but I think they, they apply, but I think the pipes...
I mean, at least here a kid can't go in.
You had said that...
The store on Cottage, the Union Mart, sells the exact type of pipes we...
They sell, they sell, they smell the same kind of...
They allow children in their store, and they sell candy and things like that, we won't allow children in our store.
That's more, I think it's a slippery slope to regulate signage on content, I think you're making some trouble with that.
The difference they have, they're not going to allow anyone under 18 unless they have a parent, so they're not going to be allowing them in. How that's going to work out, I don't know, but...
It's worked for four years, we card anybody that looks under 30 years old.
Yep.
You know what I mean, so I, we, it's our livelihood on the line, I'm not going to sell something to a 16-year-old kid for $20 when it could shut down my whole business.
Yeah, it's for your own protection, too.
It makes no sense to me.
So I understand your concern too, so it's going to be a concern.
All our items are displayed in glass cases, and those are at the far end of the store.
Far end of the store, so certainly if that's the representation, and if the Planning Board chose to put that in the provisions, that would ma, that would make a lot of sense.
The only thing visible through the front window will really be clothing and art and jewelry in some cases, really.
Is that something the Planning Board can legislate?
What's that?
We can put conditions in.
No, we can, the question is how much we want to be sort of micromanaging the placement of products inside a store, but, I mean, I think a lot of these issues that would have been a cause for concern are eliminated by the age limit on the store itself, I mean, that, I think that...
And again, the way that the decision is drafted is, these elements that have been stated by the applicant would be placed in this sort of description area of the finding of it, so it'll be right up front in the third paragraph, that this is what they stated, that there'll be, no pipes will be displayed in the, in the storefront windows, it'll only be clothing and art, there will be nobody under the age of 18 allowed in without a parent, those, because they have presented that as part of their application, I can put that in the description of the store, so it's right up front. And so if they want to change that at any time, they can just come back and amend it, because that is what they are putting forward as the applicants of, of how they're going to manage their business, if that makes sense. So it's still in there, it's just not a condition, it's a finding, it's, it's a narrative is what they've put forth as their application. Conditions are usually sort of those things that the applicant hasn't put forth on their own, and the board has sort of found through the, the dialogue that is getting added in as part of that application, sort of the way to think about it.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments on the board? Anything else in public? All right, so James?
Well, the thing about that is, there was one potential condition we were talking about in there, about the age and with a parent, is that in the draft condition currently?
No, but I'll add it. I'll add it, I've already got it noted on here to add.
Do you have language for that?
Yep, I will add it in there.
Okay.
It's added.
I think that's a valid, uh, uh, condition.
Nothing else, I mean, that's not a condition.
As is a condition?
I think so.
That's how I see it.
Yeah, that would be valid.
So...
No one under the age of 18 without a parent or guardian?
Even that, I have some hesitation about it, it just seems, you know, what if they completely change, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, the world...
All right, so that's, that's James's motion.
The world's...
Motion stands.
With that condition?
With that condition?
Yes.
If you all agree.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right.
Welcome to East Hampton.
Okay, so I'll send you this draft decision probably by the end of the week, I'll send you a hard copy, and I'll send you a copy by email, and then you're ready to go, there's no appeal period because of site plan approval, so you can go to the building department and do whatever you need to do with them, for your CO, okay? You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, moving on to administrative items. Draft zoning language regarding seasonal cottage community. Like that marketing, Jessica.
Did I make copies? I didn't make copies, I'm sorry, sick kid has thrown me off. Do you guys need copies, should we take a fight in the way of...
Do you guys have a copy?
All right, I only have one copy, I'm sorry.
I've read it.
You'll have to share, you'll have to be friends and share, okay. Okay, so I, basically what I did is, I kind of blended together a bunch of things, I blended together examples that we've been looking at for campground, examples for resort communities, and then sort of piece from what Mindy has sort of presented as part of what she was thinking, and was trying to pull together something that would make sense. I personally have a bit of an issue with just doing campgrounds, I, I just don't think that use makes sense for East Hampton in a lot of ways, I, I can't envision like a tent city or a place where trailers can come in, but that's just my own personal feeling on that, and I think if the board wants to look at that, I mean, it's already in there as a use as a nonprofit, I'm wondering if it was in there because of the Boy Scouts parcel that is owned by the city of East Hampton, that is at the end of Highland Avenue, there's a big chunk of land that was, that was owned by the Boy Scouts and was given to the city of East Hampton in the 60s, and it still has like the access road and the water spigots and stuff like that there. So, you know, if, if, you know, an organization like that, you know, I don't know, but, so this was sort of a blend of a couple of different ideas into one, so if it works, great, if it doesn't, we can bag it and do something else. I presume you've all read it? Have you read it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if that's the case, I think I'd rather just sort of turn it over to Mindy and get her feedback at this point as well, and see if this is sort of in line with what makes sense for you and your business ideas, or if this is totally off the mark.
I guess I have a couple of questions first, and, you know, does it still be under the heading of community facilities?
No, so if you go to this table of uses sheet, you'll see seasonal cottage community listed under retail and service.
Okay.
So the day camp or other similar campground would stay under community facilities?
Yep.
And then a new use of seasonal cottage community would be listed under the retail and service.
Okay, so can that change that and allow us to do a more comfortable participation?
Yes, yep.
Can, uh, am I coming in somewhere in the middle of this?
Yeah, so let me, we should...
Where is the Scottish community?
Was there a change in board members?
Yes, there was, there was.
Chris, no, we assumed you watched the last nine months of here.
Exactly.
Hit the ground running.
Yeah, exactly. So, the, the story is that Mindy bought the old Touchstone Farm property on West Street, and wants to turn it into some sort of cottage lodging sort of use, community kind of thing.
Okay.
A place where somebody could come and rent a cottage for a couple days and...
Or a week.
Or a week, or whatever it is. And so, but when we, when she first came into my office and we were trying to fit the use, the previous building commissioner said, "Well, if it's a campground, it's got to be, it's a community facility, which is a nonprofit," as under the zoning definitions, if you look at community facilities, it says it has to be a nonprofit. And so Mindy and her partner said, "Well, we don't want to be a nonprofit, we actually want to be able to make a profit, so is there a way to sort of create something or change this, or is there something we can do to amend this so that they can do a for-profit business?" And so, we've had a couple of meetings where we've bounced things back and forth a little bit, and this is sort of the first time anything's being presented.
Okay.
Is that enough?
Yep.
We went in sort of thinking we would just maybe eliminate the nonprofit, for-profit, but the existing system was a little broader, and the work we wanted to do was a little more comprehensive.
And a lot of the campground examples are in really rural towns that are dealing with septic issues, that's kind of like why they've got it in place, is to make sure that there's, you know, this is a, this is a site that actually has sewer access, and most of East Hampton has sewer access, there's only a few parts of town that don't. So that's real, it, it doesn't, it...
Didn't lend itself to it.
It didn't lend itself to it because it, you know, the majority of it's talking about border health issues. And then in some of the communities, like when it's Plymouth, I mean, they're talking about five, 50-acre parcels with 200 campsite, we don't have any 50-acre parcels left, we might have one or two, we're built out, so it's, we're just a very different sort of situation than I think what other communities who have campground zoning. So, so going through this, it was more looking at it from being a cottage community, not tent sites and not trailer sites, so that's sort of the main difference.
Have those been explicitly excluded, or just not mentioned?
They're not mentioned, and I don't know if I specifically excluded them.
Well, there's no definition of a seasonal cottage, right?
Well, I haven't got there yet.
Right, so that's, that's kind of the wrinkle, right, because we refer to it all the time throughout here, but...
Yep, didn't get to that point yet.
Right.
So it's, it's really cottage is only no tents, that was my intent anyway.
And I think there's, there's language that should be easy to grab about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like eliminating trailers and...
Totally. Are we all on the same page about this, though? I mean, no tent sites, no trailers, I mean, before we go too much farther?
Well, I mean, it depends, what is the definition of a trailer, because, I mean, there's plenty of mobile homes out there and park models that have wheels on them, but they don't really are, are not intended to be traveled with. They, their wheels are there to get it to the site and then you build a structure around it.
I think usually the zoning regs in those scenarios treat a, a structure there once it's sort of permanently affixed. So if you, if it's still on its wheels, it's treated like a camper.
Yeah.
And once you sort of put it on a foundation, then it becomes a structure.
That's right, a cottage.
But, and I mean, I don't think that, I mean, in Mindy's scenario, I don't think it would really matter if she had space for twelve cottages and rolled the cottages in as prefab cottages and put them on foundations there. I don't think that's the concern, I mean, my thought on the mobile home trailer tent stuff is, it seems logical and I would be curious to hear someone with an opposing viewpoint, I'm not opposed to it.
To include?
To, no, to exclude them, and I just think that this is a different kind of project. I think that if somebody wanted to do a for-profit tent campground and they came with a site and a plan, that that might be different, I don't know. I, I just can't imagine how that would work in a way that I would be comfortable.
Most of the zoning I was looking at, sites that allow tents and trailers have, um, common facilities. They have recreational facilities, they have a pool, they have a tennis court, they have the general store, they've got like all of that.
A stream running through it.
Right.
Like, think of KOA campsite.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
I don't know if that just jives with the character of East Hampton, i- it seems a little.
I can't think of where in town you would build that.
I can't either.
And I can't think of a way to like create regulations for it that wouldn't open the door to a lot of other things that make me more nervous. So I think again, if somebody came with a plan, we can work with them and figure out if we can try to change the bylaws. But I, I'm, my initial feeling is similar to yours, Jess, I, I just feel like it's a slippery slope and it's kind of easier to stick with fixed structures.
The other thing that I.
Is there?
No, that, that I thought about this, just to sort of, um, put that out there is that some of the examples that we're looking at were for seasonal resort communities that are essentially second homes, they're not lodging. So it's like, it's like a tiny house subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's, I'm just putting that out there, that this could evolve in time if somebody wanted to take this and evolve it into a tiny house. So it's not just rentals.
Although, it says you can't lease or buy.
Not the way that I wrote it right now. That's the way it's currently drafted, but this, this could over time morph into that.
Can it be just, uh, if she was to set this up and just put in ten or twelve cottages, what would you just to say seasonal cottage site? Doesn't have to say no tents or nada, this is a seasonal cottage site.
Right, there's no actual sites for tents or trailers.
Right, it's just a seasonal cottage, you come and spend your summer or fall there. It's not gonna be something that's for the year round, is it?
And that might be something we get to talk about, right?
Yeah, I mean, that was the other.
Yeah, I noticed that.
So the way that I had it about the rental is I, is, so I wrote it so that it could be rented year round. But basically said it'd be open between April first and October thirty first. The seasonal cottage community may provide for short-term use up to four days in any thirty day period during the remainder of the year provided that there's an occupancy permit which ensure water and sanitary facilities are provided. Again, we can scrap any of this stuff, this is just, you know, for discussion purposes.
So what, and I don't know, I know you've been looking at a lot of these things and pulling stuff. What, what's the thought behind limiting the season?
Well, if you turn it into a cottage community, I guess my worry is that it, it ends up becoming like a mini.
A long-term residence.
A mini subdivision.
Yeah.
And it'd be a year round.
Where you're paying twelve bucks a night for a year to live in East Hampton.
Yeah, pretty sweet.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if you wanna live in a cabin with three hundred people, but all, what a, uh.
No, but I think these are, these are small, these are, they're only, no greater than, again, I'm pulling this stuff out of a hat, nine hundred square feet.
Can you help me understand the four days?
It's like living in a.
What, 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 are we saying that you can only use it for four days within thirty? I don't quite grasp.
Outside the season.
Outside, off-season.
Off-season, so off-season rental would be if I wanted to go there for a long weekend and rent for four days. Again, it could be scrapped, but it was just, it doesn't make it seasonal if it's.
I could go and stay for another four days, it's not like only open for four days.
Four days per one.
Off-season, a person can come for four days out of any given month.
And this is meant to reduce tenancy?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't wanna see somebody come in and start renting long-term.
Right.
Go ahead.
Would that be per cottage, only four out of thirty days?
No.
If we had tents, so we could re-rent each one for four days.
I think what I was trying to get at is a, a specific tenant couldn't rent it for more than four days in a thirty day period. So you could rent it for.
Consistent.
Every day, all season.
Monday through Thursday to one tenant and then you could rent it Friday through Monday to somebody else, but.
And you do see this sometimes in motels too, where they turn into residences, right? And so the idea is to try to avoid turning them into residences while still allowing, from your perspective, to have them occupied three hundred sixty-five days a year, basically, if you wanted to and if people wanted to come.
I think seven days.
That's what we actually talked about.
Seven days?
Can we go with seven days, 'cause, you know, holidays.
Somebody coming for a week.
New Year's holiday is like seven days.
Right.
Beyond that, fine.
And, sorry.
Yes.
Want to stop somebody from, uh, running, uh, one of these cabins while saying they're beginning at a place. And they're fortified, there's a week is up and then they decide to want to rent the next one next to it, then the one next to it, and then the one next to us. You could basically swing this off for two months.
Well, this is, this would be the.
It wouldn't be the same cabin.
Right, but this is for, I mean, this language could probably be improved a little bit, but the idea is that seasonal cottage community could provide for short-term use. So the community could provide up to four days and, or up to a week or whatever the number is, but it would be for the community as a whole, not for unit seven.
And the bottom line is we don't have any lodging in East Hampton.
Right.
We have no place for anybody to stay if they're coming to East Hampton, except for all of the legal Airbnb's that are threatened. Yeah, they don't exist, they're only a figment of my imagination.
Yeah, they're, they're gone.
So, you know, we need some sort of lodging facility and I think this proposal makes sense
Yeah.
for East Hampton and the character that we have, it's, you know, it's a great site, it's a beautiful piece of land, um, but it is right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. A fairly dense residential neighborhood on, on some sides of it. So, um, you know, I think it's important to think about a lodging facility that makes sense in a residential neighborhood, having that character, um, because, you know, we don't have any hotels coming. Holiday Inn is not coming to East Hampton. But, but we should be finding ways to allow lodging to happen in East Hampton.
Right.
At least some type of lodging.
You have twelve units, is that right?
I mean, we, in our brain, we were like, eh, a dozen, ten to a dozen would be good.
There's nothing built yet, is that right? You just have the house.
Well, there's a house on the property.
Right.
And there are two barns on the property, well, a house, there's a very long house with a barn at the end and then two other barns.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, we haven't, no.
So your thought is, I'm trying to think of like a number of people we're adding to that neighborhood, right? I mean, if it's twelve units and they're sleeping four people a unit, then you're looking at max forty-eight people at any given time. Like, I, I mean, is that sort of like the upper, are these gonna be two or four person? I mean, have you thought about all that?
I mean, our thoughts are, and, so one of the, we're at this chicken and egg, right?
Right.
I, I need to, I mean, it's nice to know that now perhaps with the changes, we can be for-profit. I can make an appointment with the landscape architect, we could start really hashing these things out. But most of them will be one room, one bedroom, so two people and maybe a couple with two bedrooms.
Yeah.
I mean, nine hundred, I appreciate your leniency, but nine hundred square feet is a lot, it's like a small ranch house.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I can't imagine that we would want something that big.
Yeah, it's pretty large.
So, you know.
Most of them are around six hundred.
We're giving less than fifty people at any given time.
So the four per seems like a reasonable assessment, forty-eight max, I can.
I mean, that's like, you're, I mean, if you're a neighbor, I guess you would spend that as the worst-case scenario, right? Is that there are forty-eight people that are staying.
Yeah, probably ten or twelve cars.
But it's a, your lot is big too, right? How many acres is?
It's five.
It's five acres?
Well, it's a little bit over five.
Little over five, okay.
I mean, right now, the most noise comes from either our neighbors that fight with each other, the people who are swimming pool behind us. It's happy noise, one tappy noise.
You can hear us all the way.
One tapping, one.
I know him, I got a lot of Italian voice, for really.
So, but Jessica, I was looking through, there's nothing about sort of like density of the structures, is there?
No, I kind of skipped that and some of them do have that, um, and I didn't put it in there to allow some flexibility in the design of it. But we could put something in there. I mean, the other thing is to think about is the traffic impact, so the trip generation of, you know, if there's one car per cottage, that's not quite as big a deal. If there's two cars per cottage, you know, it starts to have a little bit, I mean, it's not monumental.
Right.
It's not McDonald's.
Right.
But, um, and it is a busy road, West Street is a, is a main drag, so.
Plus you need some guest parking for people visiting the people there.
Well, there is, so that was one of the things I kind of struggled with was setting up the parking standard. So what I did is I put maximum of two parkings for each seasonal cottage. Overflow parking may be provided to accommodate the vehicles of employees and the resident manager at the discretion of the planning board. We could add visitors in there too, but, you know, it's.
Are you requiring us to have parking in cottages?
No, maximum of two.
Maximum.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Allison and I read it differently and I just wanted to make.
Yeah, yeah, no, no more than two, rather than setting a minimum.
Yep.
So saying you have to have a minimum of a one and then you put in five.
Yep.
I'd rather have a maximum of two and then you can't have more than that.
Yeah, ours is actually erring on the other side is that for closer ones, we wouldn't have any parking spaces 'cause you could just walk right to them, maybe the ones at the farther end of the property.
So you have a lot, uh, like parking spaces at the main office building or something?
So right now, when you come into our property, you come about a block in along the gravel drive. And then the main house is on the left, there's a barn on the right, but in between those is a parking space already for twelve to fifteen cars.
Okay.
It's a huge parking lot already, we don't anticipate changing that, just kind of making that the main.
So as far as the cottages are placed in the, you know, in distance, parking in the lot and then walking to the ones close by and then you can drive up to the others. So you wouldn't have that many cars.
Right.
By the cottages.
That would be the thing, I mean, I've stayed at places before in the western part of the United States where you can't drive to your cottage.
Yeah, you have to walk, yeah.
This is maybe a little bit bigger than the places I've stayed, five acres is a little bit bigger. So we thought maybe towards the back of the property, we could allow one car. We also don't want it to become a parking lot, we wanna keep it a nice, we want people to come there, we want it to be nice and beautiful. So, but it does rain here and things like that, so somebody might wanna drive a car in. But we could have other handicap option closer to the parking lot and, you know, a couple, other ones that it's
Yeah.
Thirty steps in or.
See, I'm not as worried about the buildings being close to each other, 'cause it's kind of weird, they're all under common ownership and I kind of feel like the market controls, like if you wanna build two cottages right next to each other, then you can. But I'm wondering more if we wanna put a limit on like the number of, like occupants per acre or something like that, like something.
Maybe just keep it per cottage.
Well, that's what I was thinking, maybe four people.
But right now, there's no limit on how tightly you pack the cottages. So you can build a nine hundred square foot cottage and literally like, I mean, I guess the fire code would bump in, but that's, you know, between two buildings, you could stack those cottages from one boundary line to the other, and then you have setbacks on the side yards and the neighbors.
So you're thinking like two or three per acre?
I don't, no, I don't think it needs to be, well, maybe, I don't know. I, I mean, I'm just thinking about that.
Let me just make a note, let me go through, 'cause they all have some sort of density.
Yeah.
And they're all very different from one another, so let me just take a look and get some ideas of what might make sense.
I keep coming back, I mentioned it last time too, I think this project and this applicant are like really good for East Hampton.
Yeah, you too.
Ideas and so, but I'm trying not to craft something that's like so open-ended that not only can she come in, but something that we all look around and kind of regret in three years. So it's kind of hard to be not drafting a bylaw for Mindy, but something that she can fit in and not have someone else sort of.
And we're kind of the same thing, 'cause as we read through, I was, um, speaking with David Blumberg today. He had a bunch of questions and then finally he said, it's great to have the conver- he was advising me. He was like, it's great to have the conversation, but maybe now that we're having the conversation and everything's getting changed, then you could meet with who you need to make to make sure that the restrictions aren't prohibitive for what you wanna do. 'Cause he said it would be a shame to go through everything and then when you run the numbers of, uh,
Yeah.
how far the setbacks are, that you can't even.
And I've been, I've been very cognizant of that as I've been trying, you know, that I'm, I'm really trying to sort of think those things through and using my landscape architecture skills as I'm crafting this, but things definitely get lost in the shuffle. So any other second eyes that you could have looking at this and thinking about those.
Well, 'cause he said that we could take some of the, like, loose framework to somebody and that they have programs, they can just punch this stuff.
Sure, sure.
And you could do that, but it might be too close on this side.
Yep, yep.
Does that seem correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So density, a density of occupants would be one thing that I would think that we probably wanna address.
So I'll, I'll make a note for something on density, there's all sorts of examples that I'm, I have here, so.
And would these cottages be like hard, they're, they would, they would be on foundations with water plum to them and wastewater connected to the ci- city system?
Yeah, they'll either be on a slab or they'll be on tiers, you know, depending on how we wanna set them.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause she's at, they have, um, they have water and sewage that they can pump into.
Right.
So they don't, they're not worried about septic systems.
It did have a section on utilities in the very end though.
Yeah.
Oh, utilities, yeah.
Very general, but.
'Cause the lighting and the.
I guess the, the open space kind of does limit the ability to stack.
Well, yeah, 'cause you're gonna.
I also have questions about that, can we?
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Forty percent seems like kind of a lot of five acres of two acres of just open.
Yep.
And was your intention that it would be like open field open or just?
Again, it was sort of to address the density that if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a place that is a, a campsite, recreational sort of jive to it, but having lodging, that you don't wanna just fill the whole thing with cottages and not have any space for anybody to sort of enjoy.
You may want some wood.
So that number could definitely be tweaked around, it could be thirty, it could be.
We would like to see it be a little bit less.
Well, does that not only apply to the stuff bordering vegetative wetlands?
No, and it eliminates.
It excludes that, so, so what happens, so this is kind of, this is actually the same as language that's in our, our cluster bylaw, which is for subdivision cluster bylaws that requires an open space set aside and allows the rest of the units to get clustered together to protect open space. These, this language is, is lifted from that section and those numbers have, are exactly the same. So what that does is it's, you know, there was this tendency when cluster ordinances were first developed that developers would just take out the wetlands and say, yeah, that's our set aside, but it's not usable, you can't recreate on them. You can't use them for trails, you can't do anything to them. So they had to take them out of the development scheme anyway because they can't develop them. So it was kind of like this double dipping thing, so the idea is you can include some of those wetlands in your calculation, but you can't make the whole thing just excluding out wetlands and not allowing any usable passive recreation land for the people who are buying to be closer to one another, to have all this beautiful land that then now they can't go on because it's wetlands.
But so the forty percent here is the idea that if you've got two cottages that are ten feet apart, that the ten feet in the middle can count as the open common space?
We could, yeah, I mean, I think it depends on how it gets designed.
So I mean, it's literally if you look at it from the, from the sky and you just cross out the areas that are buildings or parking lot or pathway, then, or even pathway probably.
Yeah, that's not great design to do it that way, but yeah, I suppose you could, I mean.
Well, I mean, that's what, I mean, I'm wondering if that's the, I mean, either if we want that or we don't want that, I mean, it's, it seems like.
I would advocate for having at least some requirement for open space, 'cause otherwise you're gonna have the entire thing, not, it's not saying she's gonna do this.
Right.
But if somebody else comes along, the entire thing will be cottages, 'cause that's how you're gonna make money.
Right, well, I also think like the point of this whole thing is this, is it's, you know, cottage camping, you know.
It's a beautiful, you wanna preserve the beautiful land.
Space.
Right.
I think Jessica, I mean, in, to back her up, I was in Indiana recently and staring out the window, driving somewhere and I saw this place that was like cottage, cottage, kind of like that, and I asked my brother about it and he's like, oh yeah, those guys make a fortune.
Yeah.
I'm like, who wouldn't rent that? I mean, they were this close to each other.[1746.61] And I'm like, well, who wouldn't rent that? I mean, they were this close to each other, but they were probably fifty. That's not what we want.
Right.
I could see that somebody.
If you, if you're driving around up in the Adirondacks, you see a lot of places exactly like that.
Yeah.
Because they're near a large recreational area like, like George or something.
Sure, sure.
And so they can get away with having them that close and they're going to rent them because.
Because the open space isn't on their property, but it's still close proximity.
Yeah, people are just going home to sleep.
Right.
Exactly.
We don't have that here, so.
Forty percent.
So we could change the number to thirty?
Oh, I don't have a problem with the forty percent. I'm, and I, again, I don't know if we want to be loose with what, how you define that. If it has to be all contiguous or, you know, if we somehow, I'm, I'm sure.
It doesn't have to necessarily be contiguous because we've got, we have cluster subdivisions where there's like three pockets.
Three large pockets, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just, I'm trying to think on either side of that if, how loose we want to be or don't want to be.
Sure.
On getting that number. I don't, I mean, it's so hard to think of these things in the abstract.
Assuming open space means not paved, just grass, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Grass, trees.
Grass, trees.
I mean, we would love to see that number twenty-five or thirty percent.
We say thirty?
I mean, we want to have a lot of grass. It's just we do have a very large front lawn in the middle.
I think thirty works.
Thirty's probably a good number.
A third of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Why not thirty?
Thirty? We'll change it to thirty.
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
Thirty's good.
Okay. What else?
Can we go back to the seasonal part and whether we think that, and I'm literally asking, I mean, do we think that there's a need for a seasonal restriction as opposed to if we just did some other limitation on, as this is written right now, can somebody come April first and stay through Halloween? Right? So on season they can stay an indefinite period of time. I mean, what if it was year round, but it merely said like, you know, you can't stay more than two weeks before you miss two weeks. Well, I know, that's the thing.
You're going to send the building commissioner out there?
Who's going to regulate any of this?
Well, that's, yeah, it's the same thing.
I mean, it's all, all of this is like very nitty gritty that.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess if neighbors complain and you get one of those scenarios where people are writing down license plates and, I mean, that's the scenario where it comes up, right?
Right, right, right.
Neighbor enforcement.
Right.
So to speak. But I mean, I.
Well, if these cottages, I mean, they're going to be heated. They're going to be, they're going to have water and sewer. They're going to be on slabs. Do we need a seasonal restriction? Is there?
Well, that's what I'm wondering is, I mean, I, I understand the incentive to limit the long-term stay, but I would be just as interested in limiting the long-term stay from April to November too. Like I'd rather do that than, than do that year round.
As we were, if it was going to be limited short term, we were hoping like maybe past Thanksgiving or through Thanksgiving to like the end of November. I don't have as, I'm kind of throwing my business partner under the bus, but I don't have.
She's not here. It's mine.
It's not being recorded at all.
You know, she definitely is like wants long term, but I also live there and we do have a winter where I have to shovel everything and clear everything and make sure nobody slips and falls and it's hurt and.
Right.
That, and so if we're limiting, I'd rather just see it be limited in, you know, January and February maybe when I'd be more likely to close down anyway.
Right.
Right, because you're going to want a vacation.
Or if you're thinking about doing it like three or four cabins and then half an acre, three or four cabins, that we only have one cluster be open during that time.
Maybe the ones close to the lots, you don't have to plow or shovel out of them. I mean, bear in mind, just because you're allowed to open year round, doesn't mean you have to.
But I'm saying hers, she would want that. And I'm just kind of like, well, it's a lot of work already. How many times does it snow? Like six? And I've already plowed so much there.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
You know, I worry. We have a tenant and stuff.
Well, if you want snow, we have to deal with the snow removal, that type of thing again. You have to open a whole new door again. You got to plow it and store it and.
Well, I mean, they're.
Call it away or push over the bank.
Just say historically, the whole reason to have the, the seasonal was to just make sure it doesn't end up being a subdivision. That's really.
Well, I mean.
And so if you want to figure out another way to go around that, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just don't want to be, and again, I'm not saying that Mindy's going to do this. But, you know, I don't want a situation where somebody takes this and then all of a sudden we have a subdivision that doesn't meet the cluster definition that is in buildings that are really small and tiny. You know, that just might raise a whole bunch of concerns. That's all. I don't want somebody to loophole.
The one concern would be a situation where if we don't have the seasonal requirement and you get four people per cottage and two adults, two children, and those twenty-four children are all going to school on the one tax for, for your property. I mean, that's not good for the community.
Well, and from an economic development standpoint, we need lodging. And I don't want to see something that's a lodging opportunity.
I agree.
To long term.
To be, to become long-term housing. That's not the whole intent here. The intent is to create a innovative, creative way to have lodging in East Hampton.
Right.
I think Mindy's got a good proposal. We just need to figure out a made away.
Keep this seasonal personally, but extend it through November and make it seven days.
Seven days after that.
Add a residency.
Up to seven days in any thirty.
When we talk April through November?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to want to do something that limits the length of their stay even during the on-season. I mean, I, I think if somebody shows up.
So make it fourteen all year round.
And stays through Halloween. I mean, that's.
It does the same, same thing.
That's like an apartment rental.
Well, that's what happens in the, that's what happens in the seasonal campgrounds. I mean, people have a camp. They bring their trailer in, they park it. They stay there for the summer.
Right.
And then when the season ends, they pack up, they go home. It's better. It's cheaper than having a second home.
Yeah.
So I'd either extend it through November and make it seven days off-season or get rid of the seasonal and make it fourteen days period.
What about going through November, but making it ninety days, uh, maximum of ninety days during the season?
During the season?
During the season.
In seven.
So again, Smith College people come in?
Yep. Oh yeah, you mentioned this before.
For, uh, school social work and they don't have anywhere to stay mostly. I'm not saying we're going to market to them. I'm, I'm going to market to them, but. I'm not saying that they're the only people that would use it, but, um, it seems like.
Yep.
Because I think what Jessica was saying is true. I have friends that rent from that West Camping KOA. They have a six month campsite. They're not allowed to do that. And they do, you know, they go there every weekend, every, you know, Thursday night and something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea for me to use less resources and make more money, but I also don't want to, if possible, since we're having a discussion, just fourteen days is fairly limiting if someone needs a month.
Right.
Is come, comes out. I've been, you know, maybe somebody, um, I have a friend in Springfield and they get, uh, base date residence sometimes that are given for five, six weeks and. She has an apartment and they're always asking her, can you stay for five or six weeks? So I don't think it's unreasonable for someone to stay for a month or two months.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't want someone there for six months. I don't want to have to talk.
A month or two is fine.
I'm going to look at the attorney in the room. What is the, when it comes to mass law and tenants' rights in terms of.
It's everything. I mean, it's hotel rooms.
It is. Yeah, okay.
That's, that's going to be another mess for.
Okay.
But that's on her. That's not on us.
No, I know. I was just trying to think about that as we're crafting this.
Yeah.
Like when somebody is there for a certain period of time, then they're considered a tenant and they have.
Yeah, and once they overstay, whether it's a nursing home or a hotel room or stool, a dorm.
Right.
You're dealing with eviction.
Yeah.
Yeah. Propose April first through end of November over the sixty day limit and then off-season.
Sixty or ninety?
I like sixty better, sorry. That's me. Other people can feel differently.
I mean, I feel like, once you're doing something that long, I don't really know what the difference is between sixty and ninety. I mean, if you're going to do a week or two, then it becomes, you're sort of forcing her to treat it more like a hotel than a campground. And as much as we may think that that's what East Hampton needs, we don't have to make her do that. But, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it, I, I get the, the idea of a three-month stay. I get the idea of somebody taking the summer off and coming for ninety days. That makes sense. I don't know. I mean, whatever we decide here is going to go on the city council anyway, right?
Right. Oh, yeah.
They'll have more hearings.
At the end of November or the end of December, so people could stay through Christmas and New Year and do that thing. Doesn't matter.
No.
I mean.
The end of November is.
The end of October. Certainly the end of December is better than the end of November, but, um.
I like her idea of the end of November. You know, you go from April through the end of November.
I can work with that.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
A seven-day stay?
Okay. Off-season.
Yep.
Off-season, seven-day stay.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we can work with that. I mean, what's going to be the busiest week between Christmas and New Year's and we'll get occasional skiers. And again, we only maybe are going to have three or four open in the winter anyway because it probably won't.
And you're going to want to shut down at some point so you can actually get away yourself.
To your, to your seasonal cottage community somewhere.
I told my friend, I bought a camper. It's never been anywhere.
Okay, so adding some section on density, which I'll get back to on, the tents and trailers are still, I don't feel like we resolved that. No tents, no trailers?
I would say no tents or trailers.
Okay, so there's consensus on that?
But I think also if you look, like Chris was saying, look at some of the language on how you define, like when a mobile home becomes a residence, that kind of thing. I know there are towns that deal with that. We might even.
We, I was going to say, we have a definition of mobile home.
I don't, I mean, I kind of think the nine hundred square feet seems big too. It sounds like.
We can make it smaller.
Well, I'm just curious. I don't, that's not my area of expertise, but.
What do you think you would use?
I, I mean.
Six hundred square feet?
I think we would like to do is maybe have eight that are one bedrooms and a couple of four that are two bedrooms. So one bedrooms.
Six hundred.
Four, six hundred would be generous for one bedroom. Nine hundred.
It's two floor.
I don't want to say.
Nine hundred is too big. I know. Well, she, she wants nine hundred so she can build seven hundred comfortably, right? And not have to worry about it. I get it. That's the, the tension of the situation.
I read it. I was like, nine hundred is crazy.
Right.
I mean, crazy in a good way, right?
Right.
My, that's a ranch house, but, um.
But if you take a ranch house and put it one on top of another.
Right.
Then it's, then the footprint isn't as big.
Feet, you're talking.
Yeah, you're only saying a floor and a half, right?
One floor, right?
Yeah, it can't be more than eighteen feet.
Oh, wait, did I say that?
Yeah, it's like one and a half stories.
Oh, yeah, one and a half stories. Yeah, that is big.
Yeah.
Six hundred maybe?
Well, that's where you start to want to do something like more complicated, right? Where like a certain number can be.
Nine hundred was small compared to the examples I have for cottage communities. They were going up as high as fifteen hundred square feet.
Wow.
Those Cape Cod.
These are seasonal, these are seasonal resorts where people, they are owning their cottage within a development.
And they live there for four months.
They are, yes, they own, it's their second home. So.
Seven hundred is a nice number. For, for a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom?
Or even for a two.
Just for kicks. Let me look to see what an accessory apartment limit is.
Do you want to try and do one and two-bedroom or just strictly?
Ones and some would two. And I wasn't thinking about two. I was telling a friend and she was like, oh, we have two kids. We love two bedrooms.
So six hundred for one and eight hundred for two.
Well, just say no greater than and pick the highest number. And then if they want to make them smaller, they can make them smaller. Accessory apartments, just for, just for kicks, no greater than one-third of the existing total residual space or eight hundred square feet, whichever is less. So it maxes out at eight hundred.
Bam.
Eight hundred seems good.
And that's. Oh, eight hundred for what? Your two-bedroom?
It doesn't matter. You can do an eight hundred foot one-bedroom if you want to have a presidential suite cottage. It's up to the person who's building.
Just make it eight hundred.
Right.
I'm there.
Do what you want.
That way it's consistent with accessory apartments.
I like that.
Yeah.
Poor Amanda.
Well, thank you for helping because you're a guinea pig here.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, I have a couple of just things I need to understand.
You go.
So when number six under ten point O two general apartment?
Yep.
We're talking about landscaping stuff.
Just more buffering.
Okay, could you just explain that?
Sure. So it's basically, um, you know, having some vegetation, trees, shrubs, something so that the neighbors who are living on the boundaries, if you were going to put cottages, like tuck them up in the back corner, that they're not going to have, they're not going to be able to look at them or see them. So it provides a visual screen that kind of buffers the two uses from one another.
Does that like twenty-five feet wide or is that, or is this, like, that's the part I don't understand. It says in width, I mean, deep, like twenty-five feet?
Yeah, which really is two, is two canopy trees or one canopy tree. I mean, you have to, like, if, looking at your plant materials, twenty-five feet is actually not a lot if you're going to have to give yourself planting space between the different, um, plant materials. They need to have room to grow. So you need to have at least some space in order to plant them so that they'll fill in. Twenty-five feet isn't, isn't as big as you think it is.
You can think of it as the thickness of the border.
Right. I thought I said to Blumberg, a three-point shot's not that bad.
Yeah.
But, um, I think what I was asking him, he said maybe Jessica's thinking of like a, something like that, like evergreen, you know.
Yeah, a screening. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
The five acre perimeter is a lot and we'd have.
I'm not saying it needs to be densely packed twenty-five feet from the beginning. I, it needs to fill in eventually over time. And that's pretty typical for landscaping requirements in, in, between uses and residential districts. You know, specifically if there's a commercial use involved.
Yeah.
And if there's going to be a lot of cars and a lot of activity, the neighbors may not want to see that. So by putting in that vegetative screen, you could even just put up a fence too. I mean, that's the other way to look at it. And I didn't put fence in there.
Right.
But, you know, we could change it so it's not just vegetation. You could just simply put a fence up. But there's got to be some screening that happens between the residential uses that abut the property and the use that's happening.
And if, uh, this is like way in the future and, um, so if we ask in the future to do some solar panels or something and we do a solar panel field, would that count as screening or not?
No, because we actually require screening for solar panels.
Well, my lecturer brought that up and I'm like, I'm not sure if that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, as far as the special permit, it says by special permit.
Oh, where is that?
At the top.
Yes. Uh, you'll look under the seasonal cottage community under, so it's special permit planning board. Yes.
It's even come before us.
Yeah.
And so you and I, we had an email exchange a couple of weeks ago, Jessica, and I, I was trying to understand and I just want to get really from my own.
Sure, sure.
The special permit, like, once we would apply, gives us a year to complete the project or it gives us?
Um, under this, under our zoning, it's two years.
Two years.
And you don't have to complete the project. You just have to start the project.
Okay.
You have to have some, the way that it's written, let me read it to you.
Like substantial performance.
Yeah, it's like, it's.
You have to show that you're.
Well, I think we were interested in doing it in phases.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, you can do it that way too.
So we could get open and.
As long as, like you say, you're doing phase one, phase two, phase three.
Commence.
Okay.
Which means that you have to pull a building permit.
Yep.
And you have to start doing something.
Right.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be completed in two years.
Okay, cool.
Cool.
Is there a completion date?
Not asking, I should be asking. Is there anything I'm not asking that I should?
I don't know. Very good question.
Feet for the light, which is what I asked David Blumberg. He's like, yeah, I don't know. So, um, the fifteen feet for lighting, is that an initial standard?
I, I would say so, yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not super high. It's more of that sort of more residential kind of scale.
I would just know where all this came from really.
Um, well, you want to make sure that you're going to have, you need to have some lighting, in my opinion, because if you're going to have people coming and going from their cars and moving around, then you want to be able to light it. But we also want to sort of keep in mind dark sky standards so that we're not having light pollution. And so there's sort of that happy medium where you want to provide the lighting and you want it to shield downward. You don't want it to go on your neighbor's property lines. And so there's sort of that happy medium where you wanna provide the lighting and you want it to shield downward, you don't want it to go on your neighbor's property lines. You don't want spotlight shining in their windows, but you wanna, you need to make it a safe space for your tenants as well to be able to move around. So, so it's kind of that happy medium, I, I think, but again, you can check with your landscape architect and see what they say in terms of the fifteen feet, but that's not, it's not very high.
Okay, yeah, no, it's not, not high at all.
Yeah.
No, it's just enough to give you light so if you're walking or.
Yep, so we're good with that, um.
Groovy?
I think I'm, I think we're good, I mean.
Okay, well, we'll make changes and then we'll come back for you at the next meeting.
Okay, um, do you have recommendations of a landscape architect that you like?
I can give you the names of the firms in, in the valley, there's not a ton of them, but we'll, we'll talk offline afterwards, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
I can't give you anyone's name specifically.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Jessica.
Yes.
All right.
I'll email you, Mindy, okay.
Last item, master plan update.
Oh, yeah, so, um, okay, so the master plan is basically ten years old now.
It is, I couldn't believe that when I read that.
And, so, I think the board needs to, and we don't need to come up with a conclusion tonight, but I think I would like to just put the bug in your ear and think about what's next. Do we revisit the visioning, do we, you know, I've had some, some conversations with some consultants about holding a visioning session, just making sure that sort of the general essence of the document is still on point, not getting down into the nitty-gritty details, but just, is this still a community that's still is heading in the same direction? This document was done before the economy tanked, so it's a, it was, it was at a different point in time, and it was a different point in time in East Hampton, cause at the time Stop and Shop was coming up, um, the permitting for that, and there was a lot of concern about big box stores, there was a lot of, um, senior housing development that was happening in East Street area, and there was a lot of concern about that development happening, there was a bit of a development boom that was happening as the document was being drafted and then the economy tanked. So, we're kind of in a different place, and so the question is, what do we do with this document? It's ten years old, it's time to do something with it, whether it's just hold like a visioning session to sort of make sure we're still on point. I don't think we need to get down into the weeds of the data, but if that's something the board would like to explore, then, you know, I would need to have a conversation with the mayor about, is this feasible? Do we have the money to do something like this, making sure that it's worth spending the money to do? Um, you know, we have an up-to-date housing plan, we have an up-to-date open space plan, so those, those two topics are kind of covered. Um, some of the other chapters, you know, energy is completely different now than it was ten years ago in terms of the programming that's available at the state level and the investment that the state and federal government have put into, um, energy resources. So there are some things that are drastically different, there are some things that are probably still on point and, and haven't changed that much. So the question is, you know, what does the board wanna do? So I don't think you need to have an answer tonight, but I'd like to have you think about that and come back to talk about it next meeting about what should we do with this document, it being ten years old.
Is there a version online or something?
Yes, yes, right off the homepage, you can, you can access.
Jessica, is it your opinion that maybe just going into the visioning point of it, or is there sections in that planning in that, that we should look at more than just say visioning and?
I would like for you to go and look at the document and then come back with some ideas on what next, or how, or you could just say, it's, it's good, we don't need to do anything.
Well, you know, you were mentioning on some sections that could use some tweaking, like in the energy section and such.
The energy section, the school section, I don't think was, was, um.
Right, so.
Gone to completion, cause there wasn't data available at that time.
That's right.
Um, now, a, a lot of school data is online and you can access that information, um.
So there might be three or four things in there that.
Economic development may be different now than it was pre-recession.
Already we've gone into four different things, other than the vision, the whole thing.
But understand, the city likely doesn't have money to do a complete overhaul, and so there needs to be kind of a happy compromise or medium. And whether it's just hiring a consulting firm to, you know, do a, a public meeting in a public and having a document that's kind of like an update to that, um, you know, that could be an option.
Forty R and affordable housing, I remember being in there a lot, I know we've done a lot of sense.
We've done a lot in that, we've done a lot that's in that plan.
Could Piner Valley Planning do an overview of, uh?
Well, I don't wanna talk, I don't wanna talk about consultants specifically at this point, I, I think we need to get a sense of what you'd want and then from there.
We're better off if we look at it before we.
Right, let's all look at the document and think about it and come back.
How much of the plan did we implement?
Um, well, I'd say there's like two hundred and fifty strategies and we've done quite a bit, we've done quite a bit.
I mean, it's hard to quantify, cause a lot of them are sort of like a little more vague, it's, well, they're not necessarily, there are some.
Somewhere vague, yes.
Sort of like, continue to encourage this kind of things, and so like, you have, but you're never really done, like, you're never done with, you know, affordable housing or alternative energy, things like that.
And just to, so you understand, I think the rest of the board members know, but the way that that process was, is that there was not a lot of money that the city had to hire consultants to write the plan, so the plan was written by, by a committee of forty-five people that were broken down into certain, um, committees that focused on the specific chapter. So there was an economic development team, they wrote the economic development chapter, there was an open space team, they wrote the open space chapter, there was a schools team, they wrote the schools chapter. So, the consultants kind of guided people and gave them ideas and sort of helped them stay in the right direction, but it truly is a document that was written by the people, which I think is really rare in most master plans. Most master plans.
It's also a pretty cohesive document for someone that was written in that way.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't come across as a different chapter written by a different person, it's.
Um, so, so that being said, you know, the city spent fifty thousand dollars to, to do that master plan. I'd say a third of that went to, um, the consultants who ran the visioning workshops, and the rest was for the, um, for Piner Valley Planning Commission to help facilitate the process. Um, most communities spend probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on doing a master plan. So, you know, we, we have a pretty comprehensive document that we did ourselves as a community, which is pretty phenomenal, actually, but, that, you know.
Ten years old.
It's ten years old, and it's a different time, and in another ten years, we probably will need a whole new plan. So what do we do in the meantime, we're at the halfway mark, what do we do?